Looks like we're on. I guess we're being recorded and not going out by, which is fine. So today is Friday, December 6th. This meeting of the Acushnet board of selectmen. This is a single-issue meeting. Why don't we first rise for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberative, and justiciable.
As I mentioned, this is a single-issue meeting. We'd originally planned on meeting which morning? Monday morning, Tuesday morning?
Tuesday.
Tuesday morning, we ended up getting six inches of snow in Acushnet. And that wasn't working for anyone, so rescheduled to now. And again, as I mentioned, this is a single-purpose meeting. We've interviewed, well, over the last three months, I guess, multiple candidates interviewed to be the successor town administrator in the town of Acushnet. We appointed a screening committee. Mr. Les Dakens here chaired the screening committee for the town of Acushnet. It was a nine-member screening committee. The screening committee put forward four candidates, four individuals that they recommended to us as being their top choices for the successor town administrator.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, they put five.
Put five, and one ended up dropping out. Thank you for the correction. Correct. They put forward five names. We interviewed four of the five. The fifth candidate decided that there was another, wanted to stay in the position that he was in. So we never met with that person. But we did meet with four of the five candidates, and that goes back a week and a half, I believe. We met with one on the Friday and three on the Monday. And took some time to deliberate individually as to what we wanted to do and who would be the successor town administrator. So I guess rather than, my suggestion would be, why don't we have some dialogue first about the candidates? And rather jumping into, I mean, a motion would be fine. But I'd rather have some dialogue about the candidates and, you know, get a sense as to where you're leaning as individuals and have some conversation about that before we throw it, you know, before we make a motion which needs to be voted up or down. Let's just have some dialogue about moment thinking, I guess. I'll start to the far right, Mr. DeRoche.
That's fine. That's fine. Good start. Came down, I might, in weighing out the people. We had the interviews last week before Thanksgiving. Were faced with two choices. The way I see it, broken down, is that we had candidates with experience as a town administrator and two candidates without the experience as a town administrator. All four involved in local government. So they do have experience working that way. Now, taking it from there, I whittled it down to two people from our four. And then it's been a toss between which way to go on this. Because both candidates, I believe, can do the job effectively for what the town needs.
Who you could ask, who your two?
My two finalists were Ron Sanangelo and Julie Hebert. They're at town, interim town administrator.
And who do you think should be the, who would your choice be?
Who would my choice be?
You don't hate me, don't have to disclose now. But I, well, we're there, so yeah, you should.
We are there. I'm tending to lean toward Ron Sanangelo.
Okay.
For the fact, I'm having a difficult time figuring out what's going to happen to the finance department if Julie moves on and how that whole department is going to function.
She could move on anyway.
Are we going to be hiring more people? You know, can we move up in-house? I don't know. The question, and I can't answer that to see. Julie's done a wonderful job here in town handling that whole department coming in three years ago and bringing us to where we are today. And she should be commended for that effort. And, you know, so that's really where I've been weighing those two options. Coming back and forth on it. You know, Ron comes with the experience. He's been town administrator in two different towns. He's been in the legislature, I believe, in Connecticut, you know. And it wasn't a very easy decision at all.
Okay, thank you. That's enough, you did it, or?
Yeah, I'm fine. We can continue on.
I know, no, I know.
Mr. DeRoche, you feel last as a chairman?
I'm deferring to you. I mean, any order you want.
Well, you know, I'd rather not talk about all the candidates, but I guess, you know, if that's what we're doing. I think that the facts show that Ron Sanangelo is clearly the best candidate for the town administrator for the town of Acushnet. His resume says so, it proves it. I think the screening committee did their job. I think he was the top pick of the screening committee. I've looked over Mr. Sanangelo's resume numerous times. As you gentlemen can both look over at my paperwork here, and you'll see Xs and pen marks and yellow highlight and pink highlight. And I've gone through it numerous times. I mean, just unquestionably, he's the individual with the most experience. And I personally think the best experience to lead the town of Acushnet. Now, could I be wrong? Sure, I could be wrong. I've been wrong before in the past, right? But based on what we have here, you know, Ron Sanangelo, he's the only one with, he's the one with the most, the best experience for me. Jack Healy has all the experience necessary to do the job as well. So there was, there's an option play with Jack Healy. And, you know, Ms. Hebert, you know, I agree with Mr. DeRoche. You know, she's done a fabulous job in town accounting. You look, she doesn't have any experience, none of the qualifications. However, you know, I know what she's done for the town finance department. And I think she's phenomenal, and that's where her forte is. You look at her resume, and that's where it is. It's town accountant, finance, and she's done a fabulous job, I believe, for the town finance department. And I think she's an asset there. You know, I don't think that this is the right time for somebody like Ms. Hebert or this size town for her to say. Again, I value her as my town, as the town's, not mine, the town's town accountant and finance director. And that's what we hired her for three years ago. And, you know, that's where she brings the most value to me as a select board member. Ron Sanangelo, Jack Healy's, the only two candidates really that fit the description of the advertisement. With that said, I've dealt with Jack in the past with some of Acushnet issues when he was in Freetown. You know, I think that when he came in and interviewed, it wasn't his best performance, in all honesty. But his resume speaks for itself. And you just see some, an individual had a bad day. There's some setup there that, you know, if we were to go with Jack Healy, there's options there. He's coming in at a very low rate of pay because his retirement says, can't do it, and he can only earn so much money. He made a comment where, you know, if he went with me, I could help Julie. And, you know, again, I think that Ron Sanangelo, I spoke with him two different times now on the phone just to make sure that I was trying to make the best decision for the townspeople. You look over his resume, he speaks highly of his constituencies all the time. He always spoke on the public, bringing the public, working with the public. So it's not somebody that's going to come in and have resistance and not do, I believe, not do what's best for the community. I think it's for the board of selectmen. If and when we hire a town administrator, we need to set that objective for our town administrator right away. These are the things that we're working on. These are the things that we'd like to do. This is how the board operates. This is how we'd like to see things done, right? I think that, you know, we're coming up on a budget season right now. It's going to be difficult. He's got to, he or she would have to come in. You know, they got to get familiar with our employee contracts, right? That's important for the town administrator to start off on. And he's got to get right into the budgets, right into the budgets.
Absolutely.
So he's going to start working with all the departments. So I would make a recommendation that whoever we hire, I know the advertisement said three and a half years. I, it'll probably turn into a three and a half year. But I would be reluctant to give a three and a half year contract. I would like to do what we've normally done in the past when hiring is a six-month probationary period to make sure that this person is a good fit before we tie ourselves and our taxpayers into a three-and-a-half-year contract with anyone. So that's it.
Similar to what Mr. DeRoche said, I ended up concluding the same thing. We've got two experienced town administrators. We've got two people with a little bit of experience. Like, you know, the one thing I said I would do, the one thing I said I would do when I left here is talk to members of the screening committee. And I didn't talk to everyone, but I spoke with maybe five or six members of the screening committee. Just got to the point where I thought I'd, you know, might have gone on, but thought I'd gotten enough of the flavor of the discussion. And, you know, screening committee all had mixed opinions. You know, a lot of them liked Mr. Mullin, you know, thought that he was their preferred candidate. I came down at the end to Mr. Sanangelo and Julie. Julie Hebert sounds like the same as the two of you. And I was very impressed by Mr. Sanangelo and his presentation. I think he's a good fit. He's a lot of experience. And also, you know, and Julie, again, he and Julie, I went to and went back and forth with the two of them. I, my conclusion was Julie was the choice for the town. And I'll tell you the one thing that I saw that I thought was, that impressed me the most. And granted, you know, not experience. But the one thing I learned through this, this process is Julie does not have a degree in finance and does not have a finance background. She sort of learned by doing. And I've worked with Julie as, you know, as a member of this board for the last two and a half years. And I'm a 40-year finance professional. I never had any clue that she wasn't a, you know, she wasn't a CPA. I mean, so she, in a very short period of time, learned that job very well. And I was on the phone call when she was talking us, talking with the bond rating agency about the town of Acushnet's bond rating. And her going through that presentation and talking about the things that the town of Acushnet is doing to maintain our financial viability and stability and planning for the future. And listen to that, and never would have known that she didn't have any type of finance background. So, I mean, what that impressed me with, when I learned that she didn't have, she wasn't a CPA or, you know, degree in finances, is that she's somebody that can learn very quickly. And I've been, I've been very, very impressed with Julie, working with Julie on my time on this board. Sort of come around that she would be my preference. But also, Mr. Sanangelo, I think, would serve this town well. His presentation to this board, you know, very impressed, very impressed. And I left this meeting thinking, after he was the only one that night, I left this meeting thinking, boy, I hope they're all this good because I was that impressed with Mr. Sanangelo. But my preference, my, would be Julie, would be Julie. But I, you know, no matter what, how this comes out, it's feeling like it's, you know, it's one of those two. I will, I will support whatever this group decides. So if, you know, we decide Julie, I'm in. If we decide Mr. Sanangelo, I'm in, so.
The chairman of the committee have anything to add?
Mr. Dakens, do you want to add something? Mr. Pecos, I'll also go to Mr. Pecos as well.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will give you some facts, gentlemen. I'm sure you've heard plenty of facts since this whole process started. But given the charge that the committee was faced with, we were asked to screen the candidates with regard to years of experience as town administrator. So please forgive me for repeating myself. Years of experience in government positions, those with bachelor's or master's degrees, masters in public administration, demonstrated budget finance experience, human resource communications experience, collective bargaining, purchasing, those candidates that had a master's certified public procurement officer's rating, and others. Each member of the committee, as I stated earlier to you gentlemen, independently rated each of these candidates unbeknownst to the other members. Each of those ratings were given to Mr. Pecos to compile. And Mr. Sanangelo was clearly number one in that category. After the rankings, we ranked the top 10. We then interviewed the top candidates, the top five that we thought. Again, the same process unfolded. And each committee member independently ranked and scored the candidates. And Mr. Sanangelo, again, was the number-one candidate.
Can I just interject a little bit, though? I did speak with three members of the screening committee who told me Mr. Mullin was their first choice. So on a weighted average basis, Mr. Sanangelo came out on top.
Yes.
But I spoke with three individuals who all told me Mr. Mullin was their first choice.
That's highly possible. And there could have been other candidates that were their first choice as well. So overall, in the final analysis, between the resume review and the interviews, Mr. Sanangelo was number one and 26% higher than the number-two candidate. So following the charge that the board gave us, we feel, I feel, and the committee felt as a group, that he was your premier candidate. And it appears that you gentlemen are on the verge of making a difficult decision.
Unknown caller.
If, excuse me, if it was easy, anyone could do it. But we feel, and I personally feel, if it was my choice, I would acknowledge Mr. Sanangelo as your next town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Dakens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pecos, say anything to add?
Sure. I would only offer this to the board. As I've said before, there is only one right choice. And that is the choice this board makes. You gentlemen are elected by the public to manage and direct the affairs of the community. And at the end of the day, provided you are presented with good finalists, and I'm very happy to say that you, the screening committee, as I said before, did an outstanding job. You had an incredible candidate pulled, frankly. And I think the committee presented you with excellent finalists. And so it is the case that I don't think it could go wrong with any of your finalists. However, the important thing, and all the finalists know this going into the application process, only one can succeed. And that individual needs to be the person who, by combination of skills and attributes personally, connects with the board and makes the board feel that this person would work well with the board. And more importantly, even that would fit well into the community. And so in the final analysis, the board's choice is the right choice, period. Whoever you pick, that's the right choice. It is, however, interesting to note that the board came to the exact same conclusion that the screening committee came to. So nine screening committee members, three selectmen, 12 prominent members of this community, all came to the same conclusion with respect to the two finalists. And interestingly enough, you came, the screening committee, at the end of the difficult process, when they did their scoring, came to the same conclusion in terms of the top candidate that the board, the consensus on the board is.
I don't think we've got a consensus yet, so.
Well, perhaps not. But I'm just reacting to what I heard.
No, I'm hearing the same, yeah.
But it is clear that the screening committee also felt that there was close competition between your top two candidates. So it's very gratifying to go through what was a very, very lengthy process. I mean, this took less, what, three, four months almost?
Oh, yeah.
A lot of meetings, a lot of introspection, a lot of very hard work. And it was all, when it was all said and done, you know, it came down to essentially the same conclusions on the part of the board as it was the screening committee. So irrespective of what you've said so far, whatever you end up deciding, it's clear it'll be one of these two people. And I think both have great strengths, and you can't go wrong with either one of them. And whatever the board's decision is, as I said before, whatever the board's decision is, is the right decision. No doubt about it. And it's been a pleasure, Mr. Chairman, for me to work with you again. I hope not to do this with you once every three years. I hope this time that it stays for a good long time. But I will say, it's always a pleasure coming here to work with you. It was a great pleasure to work with lessons with the committee. And I really, I really had a good time. So thank you for the opportunity and the honor of serving you.
Thank you, Mr. Pecos.
Thank you.
Okay, probably time for a motion now.
Well, you know, you, I shared my views with Ms. Hebert again. I believe she's a great town accountant. I don't think that the board should be paying the current salary of a town administrator for somebody with no experience. If we didn't, if we thought that Julie was going to be the person, and we were going to disagree with regard what the committee went through and Mr. Pecos's services, why spend the money and go through the process, right? I think that clearly, Mr. Sanangelo fits the bill, the description of what the town's looking for. He's got the experience. He's procuring that officer. He knows all the ins and outs about the job already. There's not a training process that needs to take place. No disrespect to Ms. Hebert. I think she knows that my feelings are very strong for her. Without question, I've had that conversation with her. But at the current time, based upon the applicants that have been followed through the screening committee, and again, as Mr. Pecos said, you know, I think it was nine screening committee members. We all have strong opinions about Mr. Sanangelo. We all have strong opinions about Ms. Hebert. But again, the nine committee members came out and I believe that it was, you know, Ron Sanangelo.
That's accurate, he was in the end with.
Absolutely.
But by the way, the screening committee, we all, with some guidance I provided, deliberately did not tell the board what their choice in order of candidates was. And they did that out of respect for the board because you might well have found another candidate who provided greater connection to the board and greater comfort level, and you might have chose someone else. And we didn't want to have a situation where the screening committee boxed the board in in any way. So they didn't want to do that. And I think let's just mention to that only because you've made some choices. And so he can say that now. It's not going to contingent you in any way. But yes, that's correct.
But we're not, just further to your point, I mean, we're not required to select whatever happened, you know.
No, I understand.
They brought in a third.
So, you know, it's funny you say that, right? Because Mr. Mullin, I think he's a great, young, intelligent individual based on his interview, I really do. But again, lacks the experience.
Yeah, him and Julie, to your point.
You know, I think, you know, Mr. Mullin, with all the respect him, I didn't comment on him. And I feel it would be unfair that I didn't comment on him and seeing how you mentioned the other three committee members mentioning him. I did. I'll be honest with you. I felt he was a bright, young individual, just lacking the experience to be able to, you know, the board of selectmen's give the coordinates for the ship to be steered, the town administrator, make sure the ship gets there, right? And that's the way that this town government is set up by law, not by town charter, because Mr. Pecos says we don't officially have them.
The one, and I'm not sure if Mr. DeRoche made the comment or you did, Mr. Gaspar, that we, you know, we're not going to pay an inexperienced town administrator, you know, a town administrator. I bet that goes on silent mode, huh?
I hope so.
Everybody willing to swim. But the, you know, I don't think we would pay an inexperienced town administrator the same thing we would pay an experienced town administrator. So there, I mean, there are other decisions to make at the next step that, you know, we've got to settle a contract, we've got to.
Who knows where that's going to end up, right? Whereas if we can't settle the contract, we have our choice, maybe, to be announced yet. But we may sit in the room and with he or she, and you know what? It's, you know, I don't, I don't want to do it for that. And then, you know, that's why I don't, I don't think it's right for anybody. I don't think you have a bad choice. I just, looking at the candidates, where the town needs to go, with the issues the town has, the PJ Keenings, the CWMP water sewer issues and all these other things, the experience comes into play heavily for me. And I believe that Mr. Ron Sanangelo.
Mr. Sanangelo dealt with a landfill, I believe, at his last.
He's dealt with a lot. You know, he, again, we can all put whatever we want about ourselves on paper. Only time will tell. That's why I expressed my feelings about the six-month probationary period. It'll give this board everything it needs to know about an individual and their capability moving this town forward just by going through the budget season. That's the way I see it. I mean, you'll be able to see how he interacts with all the departments that are under the board of selectmen's purview. And we'll be able to get that feedback from our department saying, you know, yeah, things went well, great. Hey, forget about this, this is terrible. You know, we reassess. And we're not, we're not privy to actually stay with him or her for three and a half years. So I think that that's the practice we've always done. And Mr. Dakens was a former selectman. It's always been a six-month probationary period we give people, individuals that come in. And Mr. Pecos is shaking his head like it's probably the right thing to do to prove themselves. You have to prove yourself. You don't just do jobs in three-and-a-half-year contracts. And you can't do the job when you become, and I'm going to say it, a bum on our taxpayers' back.
The one comment, Mr. DeRoche, you made earlier that I just want to talk about, we shouldn't, a factor we shouldn't consider is we need somebody in the town accountant's office. So we can't possibly move them into another position because we may have to deal with that. So that's the only, I would, that's when I would kick off.
It's a thought, that's all I did.
It's a thought. But shouldn't be a factor influencing the decision. We can't possibly do without Ms. Hebert in the town accountant's office. So we shouldn't give her the opportunity to be the, well, I just wanted to comment on that because I think that's important. And that may not be one thing influencing your decision, but I think I needed to comment on it. I could do something you could say. She's absolutely an asset in the finance department. Hate to lose her from that position. But I wouldn't want that holding her back either. So, and again, I don't, based on the conversation we're having, I don't think we can make a bad decision here today. So is there a motion from one of you two?
I'll make a motion, appoint Ron Sanangelo as the next town administrator for a six-month contract pending successful negotiations.
Okay, is there a second?
No, second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might suggest, the motion is to appoint to a six-month contract. No town administrator will take.
Probationary period.
Okay. You can have a probationary period inside of a three-year contract. Because no town manager will take a six-month contract.
No, that's fine. And we were discussing that as well.
Yeah, we figured we'd figure that out.
I would just urge you to modify the motion to say six-month probationary period as part of the three-month or three, three-year or three-and-a-half-year.
Sure.
There's the question.
I'm totally in agreement with that.
Because you're in the middle of a fiscal year.
I just want, I just want the candidate to understand they have a six-month probationary period. I could give two, it all is if it's three, three and a half. Doesn't matter, just, actually, it works out well. Depending on when we can get this individual on board, okay? Say it's J-1, January 1st, it's six months right there.
I think you'd have a hard time getting anybody by January 1st. That's only two weeks away, right?
Yeah, give it time, three weeks.
But you won't, you won't have a difficult time. And anything I can do to help you out, I'll be around to help you. I'm not looking to get paid anymore. I don't want to get paid for this. But I'll be around to help you in any way that I can. So you're not going to be in any sort of a problem with respect to that. Julie, if it is.
She's an active choice right now.
Julie is a true professional. She's one of the most professional people I've ever encountered, frankly. And I'm very proud that I recommended her to you three years ago from a very talented pool. And she will do great work for you, no matter what the result of today's vote is. By the way, one other thought I just wanted to mention to you. The world sometimes moves in somewhat strange ways. But as the case is, I was in a room both here and in Southbridge
But as the case is, I was in a room both here and in Southbridge and watched both Julie and Ron operate. And I've watched, you know, from a bit afar over the last three years. Both faced significant financial challenges. And both did an absolutely beautiful job managing them. I see where Acushnet is now, three years later from when I was here last. And I see where Southbridge was when I was there. Now, almost the same, four years later, with Ron's performance. Both communities are much stronger. So either one of these individuals, your two finalists, and again, the two finalists the committee determined, both have extraordinary talents in the area of finance. And that's going to be such a good thing for you. It really is, it really is. As I said before, you can't go wrong with these candidates. It's, you're very, it's wonderful to see good folks here.
Thank you for getting us here, Mr. Pecos.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Pecos, for your support, once again.
Further discussion on the motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye, we're unanimous. Okay, you will reach out to Mr. Sanangelo and...
Mr. Chairman, I would be more than happy to trust me because it's, it's always difficult through these processes.
I'll call him after.
But I would prefer that the Chair give the good news.
Okay, I'll do that.
There's, throughout this process, there's been bad news to give to people who didn't make the first cut.
Yeah, that's your job.
That's my job, exactly. Your job is in, Julie...
All right, I will, I will wait, phone up the phone right here.
I will wait about an hour, which gives the Chair time and the Board members.
As soon as, as soon as we are adjourned, I will make my phone call.
Can I ask the Board for one favor? Do you want me to assist you with contract negotiations?
Probably would hurt.
Because if you do, I need to know that now because I've got a, I've got a...
Well, we talked about reference checks and background checks.
Yeah, I'll do resume verification, reference checks.
We talked about all that, so you're going to do that for us, okay. Contract negotiation?
I mean, there's two models here. We haven't had any time at all to discuss, you know, where we're coming from.
Yeah, well, we need to, we need to go into executive session to do that. I don't know if we want to do that today or we want to...
There's two, there's two models for how to do this. And I would strongly urge you to get on with it because it takes time. So I'm going to assume the Chair will ask Ron to send you his draft contract. And please, my suggestion is let him use his format because it's the universal format. All the managers use it. It's the model contract in Massachusetts. The MMA has endorsed it, everybody's endorsed it. And he can pull that together pretty quickly because he's probably got one because he's been interviewing, I know that. So he's probably got one. And then you do one of two things. Either, first, you have to have an executive session to talk amongst yourselves about key provisions. And then, and then, once you've done that, I can either work with him on that contract to get it into as much of what he wants as possible and put it in front of you at the end, either done, consistent with the Board's wishes, or with only one or two issues remaining. Or the Board can bring him in and you can do it yourself. And that's just as, just as fine too. Whatever you...
You do that on the camera?
No, you do that in executive session.
You said we couldn't do that in executive session.
No, contract negotiations with non-union personnel is one of the exemptions under the...
So we can take, we can take him into executive session? I could have sworn you told us last time we couldn't do that.
You can make your discussion in executive session.
Yes, definitely that.
Absolutely.
What about him? I thought we had to talk with him in open session.
I'm 99% sure you can go into executive session with him.
We've done it all the time.
Yeah, I think you told us no.
He did, he did, I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, I think you're right. But I would want you to check with council. And the reason I'm saying that is because...
We should.
I've had different councils, different town councils tell me different things on this subject.
Isn't that nice?
And I've never...
Why would that be, Cal? Why would that be?
We want, we're going to do it right. We'll get an opinion.
And your, your town council really has to make that call because some of them will say you can't or shouldn't. And others will say you've got an absolute right. I will tell you, I have done it repeatedly.
I just told you we did.
In executive session. And it was absolutely perfect. And trust me, it was my contract.[1667.31]